So.
That was hard, real hard.
Nine seven nine. Six three. You want to run it from here? Nine seven.
Your PowerPoint?
Yeah.
You'll do.
Seven, nine one.
My.
It's your screen.
Okay, but do I have to log in?
And then password.
Is it me or something?
Yeah.
Okay, how do I do that?
Uh, just run Zoom on your computer.
Uh, nine seven nine, six, six, three.
And then we'll just log in and all of them.
What? Through the agenda?
Fifteen more.
No, through, um.
Nine seven.
Like a web as well.
Nine one.
Or do you have to zoom out? Yeah, so it's a web. Now we're doing Zoom.
Three, yeah, you got it. Three two, you're on.
So just, uh, do join the meeting. At the top.
Are you gonna be able to upgrade him?
Mm-hmm. Uh, nine seven nine.
And then I'll get you on right now with the part.
Six three, five four.
J- Jennifer, he's gonna be popping in right now.
Nine seven, nine one.
You'll see him in a few minutes.
John.
Okay, good, yeah, and then she's gonna put you into, um, the panel, panelist. Is that okay?
I just.
Okay.
Okay, and then now I'll see her password. There you go. Yeah, I'll come over, yeah, when, when we say start.
I put Stuart Pachory.
Um, John, can you come up Stuart, I'm gonna do the Facebook Live right now.
Oh, there he is.
I called Calvin, he didn't answer.
Can you hear me? Hello? Got you, Mark. You hear us? Are we, we're ready? Okay, good. Uh, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Samuel County Board of Supervisors, uh, meeting. Uh, it's a special meeting, budget hearings, uh, for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, August eleventh. And, uh, we're starting a couple of minutes late this morning, but, uh, relatively on time. Uh, Doocy, can you, uh, kind of go over the, uh, uh, how people communicate now? Thank you.
Hi, um, so if you're participating via Zoom and would like to make a comment, um, hit the re- the hand icon and that would notify us that you would like to make a comment. If you're participating by phone, you hit star nine and that would alert us that you would like to make a comment. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And, uh, Chairman De La Cruz is, uh, unable to attend, uh, this morning's meeting. So I'll help facilitate this, uh, to get through this, uh, meeting. And, um, the pledge of allegiance led by Supervisor, uh, Mark Medina, uh, you have the honor, sir.
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well done. Um, can I have a motion for a certificate of, uh, posting?
Some.
Have a motion, I have a second. I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
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 Hearing none. Um, we'll move on to the, uh, uh, budget hearing schedule, uh, and I'm gonna turn it over as for introduction and opening remarks to the CEO, Ray Espinoza. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I wanted to go ahead and just, uh, present, uh, to you and to the public, a couple of housekeeping items. One is item number one forty on our regular agenda actually was moved to our consent. So you'll notice that there's two items of the same name. And that's, we moved it to item number fifty-three on consent. So just so the board knows, um, we're gonna move forward with the consent item and we're removing the irregular agenda item of one forty. So you'll, you'll be hearing that through the consent. So the other item is just my opening remarks. Um, just wanted to, um, highlight to your board and to, uh, the public and staff that this has really been an incredible year. Um, there has been a, a lot going on. And, you know, even prior, um, the board moved forward with core values and visions, uh, with the strategic plan some time back. And, um, and that's really kind of come to the fore with this uncertainty that we're confronted with today and that we're facing with COVID. And with that, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, this budget, um, took really a turn when the very beginning, when we started this process. And, um, well, our office started in December, January, um, it's probably one of the best economies that we've seen in some, some years, really. And, uh, and for it to change so quickly in, uh, March. And with that, um, it's been an incredible ride, so to speak, um, to address the budget, I think, from the federal government, state government, and now to the county. And so there's been a lot of things that we've had to adjust and we wanna first thank the board for allowing us some flexibility this year. Normally, we've gone through the budget process in June and completed it more or less in June. We've been historically doing that since I've been on board. And, um, this year, we kind of had to kind of slow down a little bit, um, just to make sure that, um, our budget is sound for the most part. And knowing where the state is at on realignment funding and other funds that, um, uh, we were unsure about. So with that, I just wanted to acknowledge, um, the hard work of, um, the essential staff that have been working diligently, countless hours, um, addressing COVID. Um, and really dedicating themselves for the safety of the public as well as, um, the workforce, um, that we have here before us and, and at the county. So it's been an incredible amount of work, an incredible amount of, um, um, work that's gone involved just to create this budget as well. So I really appreciate everyone's hard work. The other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, um, this budget really reflects a conservative approach, um, uh, to protecting our resources. And that's one of the things that we wanted to be very mindful of, um, because, um, of the insurity of what's happening. Especially where we receive most of our, um, resources or funding from is through, um, property, um, tax. And, um, with that, um, I think it was really important for us to be conservative and that's what you have before you, before you today, which we'll be elaborating a little further on. Um, with regards to, um, you know, the current crisis and kind of what is happening, you know, one of the things that I wanted to highlight is that the county was obviously not the ones that created this problem. And, uh, we're doing everything that we can to actively address our, our financial, um, financials, trying to find out, trying to receive more funding from the state and the feds. Um, and working, uh, to make our local community a, um, trying to weather the storm, so to speak, and, and get, um, everybody, um, kind of on their feet, so to speak. And, and one of the things that we've done is facilitating, um, programs, grant programs, which the staff and your board has been working diligently hard on. Um, and working closely with the state and the feds to receive those funding as well. So, um, there's been some really good programs and some good things that we've, we've done. Uh, we've worked tirelessly to try to accommodate that, which we also have that in our budget as well. The other thing I, I think is really important, as I said on the onset, was regards to the strategic plan. And, um, there were really five key focus areas that were outlined, um, during our budget, um, during our, um, board retreat a few years back. Concerning, um, the strategic, strategic plan. And I'll just highlight some of those and then we'll highlight a few things that we have, um, that we've been working on as well as what's in our budget. So one is the operational development of excellence, planning for sustainability, sustainable growth, technology, community engagement, and health, and safe, and safe communities. So with that, um, we have done a lot of work, um, with regards to, uh, investing, you know, uh, resources and time and energy to meet the needs of our community. It's been really, really important. And one of the things that we've done, um, is to implement a fully digital budget. We're the first county in the state of California that's actually done that. And I wanna thank Stuart and, and staff, uh, uh, many staff members have participated in making sure that this happens within each department. So I wanna thank everybody for their diligent, hard work on that. And it's incredible, um, uh, budget that we have and it's gonna be much easier, there's gonna be more work that's gonna get in, that we're gonna do this next year. But it's gonna be even more intuitive and more transparent for the public to be able to use and to see what is happening with, in essence, their funding or their money. So it's really, really a great, um, goal that your board initiated through the strategic plan. And we have been moving that forward and, and as you see, there's some of the, um, fruits that, of that hard work that, uh, you have before us, before you today. Regards to, um, the Office three sixty-five was another one that we, we discussed for, um, for staff to be more flexible, to be more agile, so to speak. Um, to be able to work, um, remotely and be more tied to the system. And what a better time to start implementing that in, in light of what is happening today, to have our systems in place for that and starting that process and, and working on it has been really important. And then an additional item is, is updating our county website, um, which is definitely more user-friendly, uh, for the public. And really, uh, the important thing there was for it to be easier for them to navigate and to communicate with us and to see what is happening with the county. So that went live just a few days ago. So these are some, some points with regards to item number three on the technology bullet of the strategic plan, which I think is really important. There's also infrastructure, uh, safety element with roads, county roads, improving roads, which you'll see before you and which is actually happening now as well. A lot of work going, going on, um, including the SB one enterprise funding, general fund, and measure G funds to subsidize some of these projects. So, uh, Stuart will be presenting some of that. The other, the other element of this is also, we've done a heck of a job with, um, receiving a double A bond rating, uh, from SMP for a behavioral health building, which has saved us thousands of dollars, um, to move that building forward to really assist those in need, uh, for behavioral health services and expand the services, uh, within our community, which I think is extremely vital and very important. So those are some really great things that we've been working on, um, as well as continue to work on this year, which you see in your budget this year. The other item, I think, is one of our core assets within our community is, um, uh, or within the county itself and our community, but it's in our county with regards to this specifically as a countywide classification and comp study, um, which really kind of gives us the framework to address, uh, our workforce needs and, uh, to address one of our core value, um, assets that we have, um, within our county. A couple of other things that we've highlighted before, um, which we'll, we'll talk probably a little bit more about, but as OPEB and, and doing what we can to, um, look at, um, cost-saving measures. Um, decreasing the funding of OPEB was, um, really important for us and it's a cost-saving measure for a general fund. It's, in essence, having to put more money into it, we're actually pulling back and being able to either redirect those funds or use it for our budget. So I think that was really important, along with, um, you know, the other element is the, kind of the overall sense of the budget and kind of where we're at today. With regards to, um, Prop thirteen and the passage of that many years ago, when it comes to property tax and, uh, sales tax, specifically property tax for the county, we're, we're tied for the third and the lowest of the state of California on, on the actual allocation, uh, which, and that's the lowest, unfortunately, which makes it difficult, uh, for us. And we're, our county's in a unique situation where we don't receive a lot of sales tax, which, which Stuart will probably highlight. And with that, we don't receive a lot of TOT either. And that's been kind of our Achilles' heel through the years, even during these good times prior, it's been hard for us to move forward. But with COVID and things happening, the way they have been happening, that the two elements of revenues for most jurisdictions that are impacted the most are sales tax and TOT. So that's not our, that's not where we, um, make a lot of revenue. So that's the one, one kind of caveat to why, why we're at now, where we're at, we're not laying people off, we're not putting, you know, we don't have furloughs and all these other things. But we have to be very cognizant and careful to see where we're at over the next year and why it's more or less a status quo budget this year. So with that, you know, I just wanted to thank everybody again, um, and, you know, we have our budget officer here, Stuart Petrie. He's gonna be actually presenting to your board, um, this budget and, um, he's done a heck of a job, working really hard, as well as many other folks. So with that, Mr. Chair, I wanna go ahead and, and pass it back to, um, to Stuart, um, and he'll continue this bud- the budget here.
Yeah, very good. Uh, before we go to Stuart, um, i- is there any questions or comments, uh, from my colleagues, uh, the supervisors? Supervisor Hernandez, you have any, uh, comments to make at this point?
No, Mr. Chair, uh, wait till the end, after Stuart presents, ask some questions.
Okay, Supervisor Medina, uh, you have anything, um, that you may wanna, uh, ask the CEO or comment?
Not, uh, you know, I, I also wanna thank the hard work of, of CEO Espinoza and his staff preparing this, uh, uh, budget. It's been challenging, uh, it, we kind of came off of our normal, uh, procedures a little bit because of the COVID crisis and everybody has been working double time, um, making this happen. And, you know, it's, it's a sound budget, uh, it's very stable from what we've seen in the past, which is, uh, pretty reflective of our, you know, budget policies and, uh, what we have strived to do. You know, one of the things that concerns me going forward and for future boards, uh, is that, you know, there's a lot of needs in this county. And you, you hit on, on a point that we do need a, a little bit more revenues to accomplish the, the real quality of life things that a lot of our citizens would like to have. Uh, Supervisor Hernandez has been very passionate with the parks and worked, has been working really hard on that. Uh, I think that needs to be recognized and also trying to develop partnerships with, you know, from the private side of things as well as the city. And that's to be successful in future years, but the, the key is to have revenues to be able to build the parks. We, we found that, you know, it's about a million dollars an acre to develop a park and we don't have that type of revenue coming into this county. This past year, we've had a, uh, a, a group of citizens, friends of the library, that are very interested in improving our library and, and it is a need now. Our library staff has done a great job with the resources that they have. And it's time that it kind of moves into the twenty-first century and, um, but without some sort of economic development, job creation, sales tax, TOT, just some value-added revenues without raising taxes, um, those are kind of goals that are, are not very attainable, uh, at this point in time. But, um, I know this, uh, board has worked hard for economic development, funding it, it, it's a strong commitment. And, um, the city of Hollister has also, uh, committed to that. And hopefully, we start seeing some, you know, benefits from, um, all that work. So with that, uh, we'll go ahead and introduce Stuart and, and go forward.
So we have Stuart Petrie, he's our budget officer, he's gonna go ahead and start the presentation.
Good morning. Good morning, board. Um, so, uh, just wanted to open up the presentation here on the Zoom for, um, all the folks at home and, um, for the board members at home as well. Okay. Um, so just a couple kind of housekeeping items so that, um, folks at home can, uh, walk through this, um, uh, along with us. If, uh, you actually go to the, the homepage and pull up the agenda for this, uh, this meeting, um, you can actually click on each item and it goes to our OpenGov, uh, website and, uh, so you can click down on, on any of the departments or items that we're gonna be talking to, to see a little bit more information. Especially 'cause I don't have a budget, uh, or a, a slide on every single item here, especially the consent ones. But, uh, just wanted to highlight that so everyone knows it's available. Again, um, also, the full budget is online, um, uh, for anyone to access. You can go to the county's webpage and if you go into the cer- the main search box, uh, you can click, uh, type in finance and the first link should take you to all of our, our budget articles, uh, on, on our budget, uh, documents. And, uh, I did just wanna highlight some updates for the board that we have received with fundings related to CARES Act and backfilling of revenues from the state. These weren't a part of my original, uh, slide, but I did just wanna highlight them. We've received over, a, a little over a million dollars from the CARES Act funding. Um, that's gonna be directly, uh, moved into the programs that the board has already, um, authorized and moved forward on. The first programs and large expenditures, I think, that we have coming up are the, uh, small business grant loans or grants and then the, uh, as well the nonprofit grants. So, um, these first set of funds will, will most likely go towards, uh, towards those programs first. We are gonna see periodic, uh, payments from the state. I believe it's one-sixth, 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 and then the rest. Um, so we're gonna see it in piecemealed out here, um, through, I think, till November. And, uh, and I did just wanna highlight as well during the budget, uh, the state's budget, uh, budget, uh, approval, um, they did, they did approve, uh, some realignment funding backfills. Uh, realignment funding, um, goes to social service programs and safety. Um, we have split outs for health and human services, public health, behavioral health, and, um, also, uh, general public safety. Some of it goes to district attorney, public defender, probation and, and, and sheriff's office corrections. Um, the county's, uh, portion of the realignment backfill is about one point two million dollars, um, which is, uh, which is going to make a lot of our programs whole on the realignment funding, the losses that the county was expecting. And, uh, we're gonna be looking to reach back out to our departments to see if any had made any, uh, large cuts. A lot of the departments, um, if they were seeing reductions, were using some of previous year's realignment, um, uh, fund balance, uh, to kind of backfill for the year. So, um, but we'll be reaching back out to the departments and, and kind of, uh, going over that. But I just wanted to highlight that before I got any, any deeper into the, into the hearing. So the next slide, uh, is the countywide, uh, budget overview. This is all, uh, funds. Um, the, the total budget, uh, for the county is a hundred and ninety-four, uh, million in appropriated expenditures. Some of our larger increases that we're seeing from the previous year and, uh, that middle column is the previous year's adopted budget. But you will see that, uh, we have the CARES Act funding, um, which is a huge increase to, uh, general fund expenditures. That's where we're running the programs out of. You're gonna see also a large increase to the road improvement, um, projects. Uh, the road improvement schedule increased about twenty-four million from the previous year. There are, uh, there's a large bridge program, um, that the county has taken on. I believe there's eight bridges in total. And there's gonna be a big, uh, most, a lot of those projects are actually starting this fiscal year. And, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in my slide on whi- on, on which one that's, uh, that's actually in our regular agenda. But I just wanted to highlight that. Additionally, we have some increases in capital fund expenditures. We have some, uh, mainly, uh, social service, uh, related, uh, capital expenditures. We have that new behavioral health building, most of the expenditures are gonna occur this year. I believe by the end of the fiscal year is the timeline for them to enter that new building. And additionally, there's some trans- transitional housing, um, uh, programs and, uh, some, uh, the third phase of the ho- the third phase of the homeless shelter, that is gonna be, uh, moved forward. There's a few additional positions that, uh, that we saw. There was a lot of reductions, um, we saw departments reducing and adding, kind of changing the structure of their departments. But for the most part, um, there, there was only, I believe. But for the most part, there was only, I believe, about 11 position, net total position increase. And a big portion again was from the social services unrelated to the general fund. But we'll highlight the general fund on the next few slides. The next slide here is more for a visual to highlight where the county's funding is going. Obviously, a large portion of this is the public ways and facilities. Again, we've had major increases this year to roads and capital projects. So this is a big portion this year. Not every year does it get up to this. I'm sure last year it was a little bit less than this percentage. But then again, we have our public protection. And then between our public assistance and health and sanitation, if you add those two, those are our largest function at about 35%. So just wanted to highlight for the Board and the public on where the funding actually goes for our categories. The next slide highlights our general fund overview. Again, it is a $63 million budget. Again, that is up from 58 million last year. Approximately 4.2 million dollar increase from our previous year's adopted budget. Again, the big increase is coming from our Disaster Recovery Division, which is in the general fund, and that's where we're running all of the CARES funding through. So I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted that. So the delta of that is obviously not 6 million. So we've had some reductions that you will see there. If you kind of look through some of the items at other charges, you'll see some reduction. Some of that is from the OPEB pre-funding that we have reduced for this fiscal year. Again, fixed assets. We did ask a lot of the departments to reduce fixed assets this year and purchasing to help with balancing our budget this year. And again, transfers out have reduced this year as well. A lot of that. So, a lot of that is from capital project needs, but some of it is also from contracts. For the fire contract, it didn't decrease, but we have enough, we had, we don't need as much of a general fund contribution this year due to the taxes that the county receives for fire and a decrease to indirect costs that we normally have through our cost plan. And that's all of the overhead that the county has, council that reviews the fire contract and other administrative functions internally. So just wanted to highlight that. And again, the net of the increases in positions is about 1.2. Again, we've had, 1.25. We've had some restructuring. So for example, at the RMA department, they have restructured some of their staff that is normally in the general fund to help cover administrative functions in other funds. For example, an accounting tech position, I believe, is going to now be partially funded through Integrated Waste because they normally handle all the Integrated Waste deposits and expenditures in there. So just wanted to highlight that. The net of this is only 1.25, but there is a few nuances in there that there's some reductions and additions and movement to restructure a few things.
Stuart, before you move on to the next slide, I just have a question on general fund revenues. How are CFDs kind of booked? Is that through other revenue? You know, now that we're having a few units being built and some CFDs are, how is that revenue?
Yeah, so those are slowly coming online, and actually, I just talked to RMA office the other day, and we're actually going to have some changes to the CFD budgets because two more of the projects are going to be coming online. I think the first one, the Santana Ranch, didn't have as much of a general fund contribution as the second CFD does. And so the second CFD is not necessarily online yet, but that's when we're going to have larger contributions to public safety and other resources. But at this time, we don't have any coming in right now. We're reevaluating the first CFD to see what can be pulled. But this is going to be the first year that the county actually takes over the CFD maintenance functions because it's been taken on by the developer for the last few years. So it's kind of in a transition phase, but we will start seeing some funding coming back to the general fund to cover costs of public safety and other items.
Yeah, and so how, are you allocated to a certain line item that breaks it out a little bit more clear for the public or, and expense it out the same way just so it's kind of more visible, or is it just be lumped into?
So it would be lumped into the transfers in. We have been discussing internally on maybe making a secondary schedule that we haven't normally had on the budget going forward, which would be a recognition of all of the transfers. I know we're going to work on that for next year. But necessarily, we did not have any transfers into the general fund for CFD this year. We're not expecting that this year.
All right. I think it's something in the future you may, you know, want to, as that grows, and it's going to, probably have a schedule for that.
Yeah. Yeah, this is the first year that we actually had a budget, you know, a real operating budget for the first CFD that was created. And you can see that under the CFD and CSA schedules. But it's the first real operating budget because we are going to take on the maintenance and, you know, the park maintenance programs there, the lights and all of that, the streets and everything, just like we do with the CSAs as well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
The next slide again is just kind of a highlight of where the money is going from the general fund. Again, and I just wanted to highlight that the County Administrative Office shows the most, but that is mainly because of how our chart of accounts is set up. This also includes all of the non-department expenditures. All of these are, you know, include contracts that don't necessarily, are not correlated with one of the other departments. This would include the animal control contract, our public defender's contract, a few other items. So that, I just wanted to highlight that that fifth, number 15 County Administrative Office, that is not just the County Administrative Office. It is made up of programs and functions that the County Administrative Office oversees. But it's not just the sole office that only has a few employees and running minimal contracts. So just wanted to highlight that. Again, Sheriff makes up a large bulk of this, Public Safety. And then you'll see the RMA departments built up in there of the 70 and 65. Again, that's a split out of our old chart of accounts and how it was in previous years between when we did have a Community Development Department and a Public Works Department. But I just wanted to highlight that so everyone kind of has an idea of how the general fund, general fund funding is spent and where those resources are going. Supervisor Metello, I'll give it back to you for, to move toward to the consent.
Okay, thank you very much. Any supervisors who would like to pull any of the consent items? Seeing none, would the public, Supervisor Medina? Where was that? Well, I guess not. Anybody from the public would like to pull a consent item?
If you wish to pull an item, press star nine or raise your hand. We have none.
Okay, Supervisor Hernandez?
Just one for clarification. Item 26.
Okay, we'll pull item 26. And that's the only one. So I'll entertain a motion that includes a temporary do-pass from the Board.
Make a motion, temporary do-pass from the Board with the clarification on number 26.
I have a motion from Supervisor Medina and a second from Supervisor Hernandez. All those in favor say aye for a temporary do-pass. Aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, hearing none, passes, temporary do-pass for consent excluding 26, 3-0. Supervisor Hernandez, 26.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Stuart, I'm seeing $150. Is that net revenue for this last year on cannabis, or am I looking at this wrong? We budgeted not just for the management of the program, but there's revenues that do come in from it too.
Yeah, so the actual revenue, as I understand it, we just finalized the permitting. And now there's a process of these businesses actually getting up and running. I've discussed it with the Ag Commissioner, and we had discussions that we would not actually see that funding come in the, in the first year. It might be at the very tail end of the fiscal year when these businesses get up and running. Again, with COVID going on, I think there's other, now that throws a different kind of item into this mix of getting a business up and going. But we have not, we're not expecting those revenues to come in this year. This budget is mainly built off of if there are more deposits and more fees for additional permits, if they would be issued through the middle of the year. So this budget is solely representative of...
The management of the program.
Yeah, not additional funding that is coming in yet. We have not factored that in. We're hoping that, you know, next year we'll see, we'll start seeing some revenue and we'll start being able to include that into the budget. But it was recommended by, you know, our Ag Commissioner not to expect that funding this year due to the, the, due to when the permit started coming out and getting this up and running.
Yeah, so basically what I'm hearing is we're spending money on managing this program, but we, the county hasn't received...
We've received deposits from our permits, and we're going to be offsetting the expenditures with those deposits. So it's supposed to be net neutral through the deposit and permitting process.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thanks, Stuart. Thanks, Chair.
Oh, thank you. And the only question I have, we have a DA with a hemp operator, and hopefully they get off the ground, is the hemp operation and potential revenue would be included into cannabis scheduling?
So again, that one also, we're not sure how much we're going to expect this year because they were also starting to get up and running. We have not included it in this budget again. We're trying to be conservative with this budget and not, you know, add things on the basis of, you know, hopefulness.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, so I, we're, I haven't gotten that far yet, but I think we're going to probably include it in our non-department revenue area as, to identify it as discretionary revenue that the Board can authorize to be spent in whatever way, you know, the Board wishes. We haven't had an internal discussion. We might include another division. It would not go into cannabis, though. It would be in a separate area to separate the programming.
That makes sense. That makes sense. Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the Board for temporary do-pass motion. Well, I'll make the motion, temporary do-pass. Can I have a second? Have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? No?
Aye.
Okay, I think Supervisor Medina says aye, so that's good.
Yes, sir, I said aye.
Okay, got it. 3-0. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to the regular, the regular agenda. Here we are. Non-department county financing. Mr. Espinoza, you want to lead into this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, just as a clarity, this is the regular agenda we'll be focusing on. As you can see here, some amendments and some changes, small nuances, a few changes, and some highlights for the year. And so we've actually had, have these particular items on regular agenda. And so today again, Stuart's going to continue moving through each one of these items. We're going to request your Board to approve a temporary do-pass on each one of these items. So item number 129 through 140, let me be clear here, 147, with final deliberations and staff recommendations. So with this, I'll go ahead and pass it over to Stuart to continue. Stuart?
Supervisor Metello, if you don't mind, I just, if I could explain something on the regular agenda so it's clear for everybody?
Oh, absolutely. Go ahead.
So if you see on the regular agenda, there are a few items that have a parentheses supplemental budget amendment. We have included those as, and we have them here available to the public, and I believe they were handed to the Board members. But these are, these are items that Administration Office has identified for the Board's consideration to adjust to the actual recommended budget to include on the adopted budget when we create that document. And I did just want to highlight that we do have a few minor administrative corrections that we want to include and get onto the adopted budget document and to clarify. So I just wanted to highlight that.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to add one more thing too. Normally, every year, we do highlight this, but we've done it so many times that we kind of, we didn't really highlight it. But I think in light of the new system and kind of how we have that tied to this, we do have the agenda itself. Each item, we have it linked. So I want to thank staff for doing that. They actually have those items linked. It actually takes it to the online budget in the system that is linked. So for the public, if they want to see, they can click on this particular item. It'll take them directly to the budget item, and then they can look at it. It'll actually go to the main budget page, the main topic of discussion. If they want to receive the, go to the main page of the online, there's a couple ways to do it. But the one key is in the very beginning of Stuart's presentation, there was a link. You click on that link, it'll take you to the main page, and then you can go to each budget unit from there. Look at the schedules, look at the comments, look at everything. So it's a really nice, user-friendly budget, online budget itself. So I just wanted to be clear with that as well. So when we're going through these items, you can look at them and click on it.
Very good. Thank you. Go ahead, Stuart.
Okay, so item 129 is related to our county financing. The general fund contingency has historically been adopted at a $1 million level, at least for the last few fiscal years. Due to the economic outlook and having flexibility this year, Administration Office has recommended to increase that to 1.5 million. That gives the Board more flexibility when deciding if there's a, A, an emergency item that needs to be taken care of, or if there's an opportunity last year... Last year, the board moved contingency to purchase land at the, off of Buena Vista. So if there are any opportunities like that, I know there's been discussions due to COVID of facility needs, especially in consideration with, if individuals get sick and, and, and how to help them and, and if we did get a surge. So the board, or, sorry, the county administration office is recommending moving that to one point five million. It'll be part of the general fund reserve, and if the funding is not used, it'll just be, be held in our fund, in the county's general fund balance. But it's just as a contingency.
Any questions from the board on increasing the contingency to half, another half million? Yeah, I, when I looked at that, I'm happy you're making that move. It, it makes sense. A million dollars doesn't cover very much anymore. And that, that's a good move in my book. Do we need to make a vote on that? Any comments from the public? Please step forward and state your name.
Good morning. Thank you. Elia Salinas. I think that that's a great idea to increase it, but, and I, I, looking at the numbers that we've spent already, is it possible to actually move it to two million? Because we're not even out of this yet, and we don't know what's gonna happen for the next year and a half. So I think it's something that maybe you all should consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public?
If you would like to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
No further comments. I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the board. And I, I know I, that was my gut feeling about maybe making it two million. But the trick is, is that you gotta find the other half million. Stuart, you have a comment as far as that?
Yeah, so in the, in, in the final staff recommendation, we have included authorization, if the board, if the board so chooses, that if there is available reserves at the end of the fiscal, fiscal year nineteen-twenty. So we're doing the, the year-end cleanup right now. Outdoors office is working on that. We're working in conjunction with them to finalize some transfers. But if there's available reserve, we're recommending to replenish the disaster recovery reserve back to a million dollars because it's down to about two hundred thousand and we won't see the re, the, the money coming back from FEMA and CARES and, because we still, we're not getting all the CARES money until the end of November. And so we have recommended that if we do have that general fund available reserve, that we would increase it back to a million. So I think that solves that issue, but I just wanted to highlight that. That would mean that you would have a one point five million contingency and one million in our disaster recovery reserve to move forward this year. So just wanna highlight that.
Very good. And it, it was a good question. Yeah, I really appreciate it. Okay, if there's no other further comments, I'll entertain a motion for temporary do pass on county financing.
Make a motion. I'd like to make a motion, temporary do pass.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye, from Medina.
Perfect. Okay, passes three-zero. We'll move on to the county administration office. Ray?
So under the county administration office, there's two items. So we'll start with the item one, one-third, labeled one-thirty. This is budget unit ten-fifteen. The, and this is where the non-departamental expenditures come out of. We, we have a few things under here. General fund contributions to cer, to certain programs like our roads. Also the fire contract. But the item that we wanted to highlight was that we do have a hundred thousand dollars included for consultant for a park's master plan. Due to the kind of administrative need to, to manage this, it's been recommended by our office to, to have the board consider hiring a temporary, maybe analyst level or, or project manager type position, either consultant or, or use a temp. And this, we, we would, we, we are recommending to the board to increase that one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand to handle this project. This would be paid for through park impact fees to move forward with that. But just, just wanted to highlight that. So the staff recommendation, recommended change to include as a supplemental budget is to increase the consultant budget by a hundred thousand for the, for, for consultant services or temp salary related to the park's facilities master plan. And then also, we need a, to also include that transfer out and in from our parks impact fee budget unit to cover those consultant costs. So that's what the supplemental budget attachment includes. But just wanted to highlight that. And if there's any questions on, on that or anything else on this budget unit, please let me know.
Okay, thank you Stuart. Any questions? Supervisor Hernandez?
No, I just wanted to make some comments, and I appreciate this item coming forward. It's funny because what you mentioned, like at the beginning of our, our meeting, Suarez Batella was the, the fact that we need more revenue. And to a certain extent, we have to get creative in this day and age of COVID on how to do that. I know outdoors is a, is a huge now commodity, believe it or not, for the public. There's, we just came back from a trip to Yosemite and there's, there's a huge interest to, to disconnect, to get away, to have some form of recreation. You know, with that said, there's a huge opportunity for driving tourism dollars. Folks that are basically visiting these communities, willing to spend money in those communities. So the idea was to, you know, we, we, we did visit the whole, without getting too much details about the park master plan, when we were talking about the sports complex, that obviously didn't, didn't surface itself for too long. But we still feel that there's an opportunity. And, and honestly, I personally feel in Samyel County, we have lush opportunity for using now what we have, our, our beautiful resources. South County, namely Pinnacles, Hollister Hills, that whole area to highlight, you know, to a certain extent to, to, to be, to accommodate to folks that are coming into our community. So the idea was, because we, we didn't get to really finalize that park master plan, you know, we're still working with this, with the, the high school on moving forward with that property, the, the other, can't remember how many acres it was, thirty-seven acres, I wanna say. And, and, you know, right now, the current park master plan actually doesn't have, or, or doesn't have in it the, this solar panel array that pretty much throws that master plan out of sorts anyways. So the idea is to revisit it and just have a very simple focus on a trail. They would connect Trespinos, Hollister and San Juan. And it would give a huge recreational opportunity to our community, like I said, tourism. And maybe if we anchored it to economic development via maybe some lar, large lots or decent sized lots that would accommodate basically folks that have these toy haulers that have, you know, they, they have RVs so that they could now not just bypass us because that is the history. I'm a business owner downtown, so I see it all day long. I see, you know, when we had San Benito Street open, people driving right by me all day long. And it's such a frustrating thing because I know even Pinnacles says, we don't have an issue with visitors. We have them coming all the time. To a certain extent, we have to turn them away because there's only so much capacity. So there's huge opportunity. If there's a way to capitalize on, on making sure that, that these lots would accommodate these folks close to a commercial district, like in central Hollister or, or even San Juan area, then you would have these folks visiting, visiting these areas and join those areas. And then ultimately, there would be a conduit between the three cities to benefit San Benito County. And to, to now, for me, it would be an exciting thing to now reframe recreation as an opportunity for economic development, which is there. It's already been there. When I went to NACO, that was, I went to a presentation where they mentioned that there's huge opportunity with economic development being tied to parks. We just have to get creative on how to make that happen. And this is the first start of a good, I, I think, you know, and from the folks talking to Valerie in, in Reach, it sounds like they're interested in supporting it, so there could be a lot of public support. And this is the first step, is to get that consultant to revisit that current drawing and, and update it to suit these needs that I just shared.
Yeah. I, I, I can't agree more. And I know our, our parks plan is kinda getting a little dated now. And maybe some, the community has changed a little bit, and, and you do have to get creative as far as how to promote it. And I hope you maintain your, that energy Supervisor Hernandez, to continue to push for, for the parks and, and recreation in Samyel County. Supervisor Medina, you have anything to add?
No, sir. Nothing else to add.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for the public. Any comments from the public?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm Valerie Eglin with Reach San Benito Parks Foundation. Community health is not based on food, security, jobs, medical services or housing alone. Community health must include the availability of open spaces for the freedom and health of the human spirit and mind in our county. Health requires a healthy body built up in indoor activ, in outdoor activities, in parks, paths, pools and trails. It is to that end of community health that Reach San Benito Parks Foundation was specifically named and created by the first Parks and Recreation Commission in San Benito County. Our communities are suffering from diseases and mental issues that call for greater access to parks and recreation. Walking is the simplest and most beneficial exercise, and it costs the least. Our families need respite and the creative joy that comes in open spaces on walks and bicycle rides. Reach encourages you to provide for the updating of our master parks plan so the regional park and River Parkway can move forward for the public good. Reach also encourages the board to provide for bicycle pedestrian friendly streets and roads with enough of a shoulder to support bicycle safety. Every road repair should include space for a bicycle to pass safely. In addition, I was so excited, our whole board was so excited when Supervisor Hernandez came up with the suggestion of moving the parks plan forward. And when Don Kelly spoke several meetings back that, about the regional park, it was just, the writing was on the wall that here is the time. We have momentum all over the state to move forward with parks. Thank you very much, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Good morning again, Elia Salinas. Yeah, the momentum is there, and I am one who really does take advantage of all that we have to offer here in San Benito County. And I have seen an increase, this COVID-nineteen has done, what it has done, as you see more families out there walking. You see them out there. The bike sales went up because families are out riding their bikes together. So I'm totally for this. Although I would like to throw some caution out there, I don't know if you are aware with regards to the letter that Tenenbaum sent to the city of Hollister that they're wanting, he wants to consider have, building a new high school. So please be cautious about the money that we, they're wanting to spend right now for that property. He wants a new high school, and it's gonna cost a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. I'm completely upset about this because we just spent millions of dollars redoing the high school knowing, him knowing that they're gonna need a second high school. And I specifically asked him in a meeting, this new high school renovation, how does that affect? Because I thought the school was overpopulated, and he said, no, it was not. And now he's come up with an idea that they want a second high school for a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. This county cannot afford a hundred and twenty-three million dollar high school, nor can, nor, so I think we need to step back a little bit with this negotiations that they want on this property. And let's, let's slow down a little bit and let's see what we can do to save county money. And if the high school is really wanting to do this, then it's not beneficial because they want this for parking. And we want it for parking for people to use the, to use the, the regional park. So let's take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Come forward.
Hi, my name's Robin Pollard, and I'm with Reach also. I wanted to suggest, and I know this is all about budget, but a lot of people are using what we do call our regional park and adding a couple of trails across there. I know you already pay staff and you have tractors. You could cut a couple of additional trails for the people that are going out there. There, it is being used a lot. It would also form a fire break, which is public safety. So if we could get some additional trails, just to, just cut the weeds and people will walk it. I appreciate the opportunity to share how to get more use to that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Anita Kane with Reach San Benito Parks Foundation. And I just wanted to mention that as part of the master plan, I'm, I'm hoping that it includes some serious language for river stewardship. Recently, we've seen some great cleanups that have occurred along the river, and much work is needed. And the county's support is needed to back that up as far as cleaning up trash, vandalism, establishing partnerships with allied nonprofits that can help, so the county doesn't have to have the whole burden on that. Homeless cleanup along the river. It's gonna require enforcement and just good stewardship. And I'm hoping the county takes that into serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody online that may wanna comment?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
No, no further public comment. I'll bring it back to the board, and this is to increase the one-thirty budget unit ten-fifteen by a thou, hundred thousand for temporary hiring of an analyst level. I'll entertain a motion.
If it's okay, had some, couple final comments, is that, is that a question?
Of course.
I apologize. So just to kinda touch on a couple things that in, the, the public had mentioned. It's funny, just yesterday, they had a meeting at the city council that supported now extending the outdoor dining. There was a talk about focusing now to have that, the San Benito Street actually be open to traffic, but just one way and slower traffic. So they wanted to make sure that they made it safer. So there's a lot of, which I'm not gonna get into all the details of the outdoor dining, but it's an opportunity. And now feeding in, because the, the, the mention was from the council folks was that traffic going from north to south. So by default, that means it's directing that traffic into that River Park area, which this would be like so symbiotic to support each other, right? Because then you're directing traffic into the River Park Trail through the business community. Patronizing by default is an opportunity. So it could be very conducive to, to have, to a certain extent, to, to support the city council's focus on the outdoor dining element. But, but with that said, there was also mentioned, I know one of the ladies mentioned bike trails downtown. There was a mention of that. I, I remember specifically speaking to interim city manager Brett Miller about it. And he, he mentioned that he wanted to consider what that would be, what, the possibility that they just had to make sure that they, they, they allowed for, for, you know, safety and, and making sure that the traffic was slow enough. And if there was a bike trail, that there wouldn't, there would be enough space. But I know that's, that's something that they were interested in. I, I would totally support it. I think it's a really good idea. Because then you would get traffic going north and south with bikes. Vehicles would only be south. But, and so as far as the high school negotiations, it was specific to Nash Road. I don't know anything about a new high school. To, to, to me, that has nothing to do with our negotiations. And I appreciate the mention to, to be careful when it comes to that. For us, it should be the simple focus on us basically acquiring that property for the sake of moving forward, and that's the goal. We already did some good negotiations with them in helping them with building their, their little parking lot on the side. I think in good faith now, we should be able to move forward with acquiring that property ourselves. So those are my final comments, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for this budget item.
I make a motion that we-
Make a motion, temporary do pass.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Supervisor Medina votes, I'm sure, aye as well, and passes three to zero. We'll move on to the 15, 1047.
Go aye.
Okay.
Little delay there. Okay, so this one does not have a supplemental recommendation to change. Staff had already received the information needed to move forward with preparing this budget adjustment. I know we did it kind of last minute on the, before we, we produced the recommended budget and provided that to the Board of Supervisors. Again, the, in previous years, and you'll see in that fiscal year 1819 column, some expenditures. I think we're still waiting for some revenue, or we received some this year. That was related to the flooding back in, I believe it was 2017. So previously, we've had, you know, when, when we had the flooding, was when this budget unit was created to start managing that, that FEMA process. And we're going to continue holding this, this budget unit for recovery process. Seems like we've been needing it more than, more than ever, having this, this budget unit to, to, to manage this, these funds. But for this year, with reimbursements, we have initial estimates that from FEMA and CALOES, we might be able to recover about six hundred thousand of what we've spent. It may be a little bit more due to the Great Plates Program, which is supposed to be 100% covered, and we have no problem. And we're not going to have the back and forth with FEMA on, is this approved, is, is this approved under their funding or not? So we have estimated about seven million in revenue next year. The bulk of that coming from the CARES Act funding of that 6.4 million, and, and expenditures of about 6.1. We, we have already spent this, this year over 700,000, and obviously, that's continuing to grow. So these are, these are the initial estimates on where we're going to be at. And again, if there's any changes, we'll bring any, those to the board, and I'm sure we will have changes with this, this budget unit. Especially if we do get any additional funding for these, these types of programs from the Fed or state. So there is no supplemental budget amendment to, to this item.
All right, very good. Any questions from the board? It doesn't appear so. Any questions or comments from the public?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
Okay, very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the Sheriff's Budget 40. We could probably do both of them at the same time, right? Yeah, why don't we do that?
So again, there's no, no budget amendments for, for the sheriff that administration is bringing to the mord at this time. Some of the, some of the changes for the operations side, we did have some general expenditure increases. But again, we had to go back to all departments and request some reductions. So this is reduced down from the department requested, and if anyone wants to see what that looked like, they're more than welcome to click on that, that, that section of our budget, budget book to see the, the changes that were made. We did just want to highlight that there, there is a one FTE increase under operations for a sheriff's deputy. This is to support a new social services program that's funded through grant funding out of HSA. And that's for, I believe, a homeless, homelessness program. So we wanted to, wanted to highlight that and make sure the board knew why there was any increase to, to this budget unit for, for staffing. And then there are, there was a request for three new vehicles, which will be, will be covered through the equip- Sheriff's Equipment Impact Fee Fund. So we will be tran- we have a, a transfer in to cover that, which is higher than, than the previous years adopted to cover those, those vehicle costs. The next budget unit is the corrections side of, of, of the sheriff. We've had, we've, we've had to move forward with some, some services and supplies increases, mainly due to the new jail facility. That's obviously bringing increased cost, as well as increased cost for consultants for nursing and telemedicine, and that kind of programming, so that the, that the sheriff's office is in line with all of their state mandates. Other changes that, that you will see is two FTE correctional officers. Those are put in place, and they, they're administratively going to be put on hold until, one, the opening of the new jail, and the, the State Corrections Department needs to come in and make final determinations on what they, what, what their recommendation or what they, they require of, of, of the sheriff's office to have for staffing. So this is put in place so that if needed, the sheriff's office could move forward with that as quickly as possible, without having to come back to the board again mid-year. So that's why we've, we've recommended, we, we recommended to include that in the recommended budget. And then there is a, there was a request for a new ADA compliant transportation van that we're going to also try to cover through county impact fees as well. So those were the things that we wanted to highlight for the board and the public.
Any questions from the board?
I had one question. You mentioned Stuart, that that one new officer, what was his, his duty again? What was the, the main function of, because it was going to be covered by grants?
There's a homeless-
Homeless, that's what it was.
Program. If you want any more detail, I'm going to probably have to ask the sheriff's captain to maybe, maybe speak in on that. Did you, did you want us to go over that program a little more in detail?
Please, or even if I can get some info about it, only because what was mentioned earlier, even about the blight when you deal with, you know, I know the city's had issues with folks being out in the San Benito River, and those are homeless folks. So in tandem, to a certain extent, it could actually be a support to address that, where we don't have that river polluted with junk and stuff. Stuff, because I, I know that there's been issues with homeless out there.
Do you want to say, mention that Captain Taylor's on the line to maybe speak to a little bit of that program?
Sure.
Is it to me now? Sorry.
Okay, I, I, we see you, Captain Taylor. You want to speak to the program a little bit to answer Supervisor Hernandez's questions?
Sure. So we were approached by HHSA and to be part of an outreach program for our homeless population, to work in tandem with some crisis counselors and staff from Health Human Services. It's just a, an outreach program to get people into services. So a lot of times when we deal with the population that's a little at risk and maybe abusing substances, they like to have some type of security function with their team. So we would just be going as outreach only, and it's a dedicated position for that team. Again, just to be able to go into our community and try to really help funnel some people into some services and not funnel them into our correction system.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez. You have any further questions for the captain?
Thanks for being on, Captain Taylor. Yeah, I mean, my main reference point, and it sounds like it's kind of a whole separate function, which I don't want to convolute things, but just with the, with the intent of, I know there was issues with folks at the river. I thought if, I didn't know if this program could help support in some way, shape, or fashion, maybe even working with the city on addressing what you see when you go out there, right? The, 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 you know, I know that there's been some, actually some active participants of our community to clean up the river. But even just addressing any issues when it comes down to maybe not, not enough surveillance in the area. I think it is a good idea to have something where, where there's more of a focus. I would imagine with, you know, God willing, that the trail gets built out, there's going to be a lot of self-correction, right? Because there's going to be the public out there, they're going to be paying attention, so there might be a benefit to it. But it's just a thought ultimately, having a focus on making sure that we're, yeah, we're restoring that river area, such a beautiful area. So it's just thoughts, Captain. It's, there's no request.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Definitely one of the areas that we would be targeting would be our river area. It's a challenging area for us, because there's a lot of private parcels in the San Benito River, which is a little different than other places around the state. But we would definitely be looking to do some outreach with the team down there. Instead of just moving the problem along from parcel to parcel, we were looking to get them into some services and actually get them out of that environment altogether. So that would definitely be one of the outreach goals of the team, would be to go into our river area and help people reestablish themselves and get out of there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Taylor.
Any other questions from the board? If not, I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public would like to comment on these Sheriff's Operations and Corrections?
If you'd like to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
Hello again. I would just like to say thank you to the Sheriff's Department for being proactive with this program. Based on what we see, all the protests across the country on the Black Lives Matter protest, it's basically, that's what they're asking. They're asking not for law enforcement to put people in jail, but for law enforcement to be actually trained in other venues of what they can do with the people that are out there, not just the, you know, not just the different minorities. But I'm talking about with the homeless, the people with mental illness, alcoholics, and drug addicts, and stuff like that. So kudos to the Sheriff's Department for, for being for, forward on, on what actually the country is wanting out there for law enforcement to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Valerie Eglin. The park, or the parkway, the River Parkway, as Supervisor Hernandez mentions, that, that there is a self-corrective type of situation that happens when you put people in an area. That has happened also up on Park Hill, where the homeless, after brush has been removed, and there's more exposure, and more people are going up because of the park structure, that the homeless situation has been alleviated a great deal. You still have gathering, but you know, you, you cannot expect absolute transition to an area. There has to be a tolerance for a certain amount of, what, transition going on from time to time. So I'm very appreciative of the sheriff, and what I would consider is also working with Fish and Game. Our county Fish and Game, Marty Martinez, has been working on reclaiming the river, the San Benito County River. And there's a great possibility with Cheer and Herman Garcia to move that project forward. There's also a point blue conservation effort from Marin that has been working with our county schools for repairian projects along the San Benito, and working with, I think it's third graders, fourth graders. So there's, there's a lot of opportunity, and opportunity is the name of the game. This is what we have to grab onto, and when we've got all of our departments moving forward in the same direction, it is extremely, extremely hopeful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No more comments.
Okay, we see no more further public comment. I'll bring it back to the board for an action. And I want to thank Captain Taylor for his passion as far as trying to work on the homeless issues as well. Can I have a motion from the board?
I make a, a motion to approve the item.
Okay, and I have a motion on, on the board for a, a budget unit forty-
Second.
Operations and Corrections, and that's two of them. So I have a second, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on to probation. Great. Stuart?
Okay, so item 134, probation. Again, there were some general expenditure, expenditure increases, kind of nor- normal increases for contracts and training or, or smaller items. The big change under the probation office, though, that we just wanted to, to make sure that the board highlights. And probation was another department that we went to and asked for them to reduce their request quite a bit as well. They asked for adding a one FTE, which was an office assistant position, but that will actually be covered through AB 109 funds. So no general fund cost on, on that specific position that will be added. So that's really all we wanted to highlight under probation this year, because there's really not a whole lot of change from the previous year under the, under this budget unit. But again, if any, any questions, please let me know.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, any questions or comments from the public?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
Okay, no, no comments or questions? That's good. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to-
I'll make a motion, temporary do pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, anyone opposed? No opposed. Okay, we'll move on to the next one, planning.
Mr. Chair, would it be okay if we did RMA together, RMA 35 through 139?
Yes, we'll do all-
We'll do all of RMA, planning, and public works together.
We'll do all of them together.
Stuart.
Okay, so item 135 is the Building and Planning Department. And, and these all, all, all of the, all of the RMA's budget kind of is intertwined a little bit more this year because we did see some reduction in staffing on the administration engineering side in order to move some positions over into the planning side. RMA's identified that their needs are more on that building and planning side at this time. So, so we've basically deleted some FTEs on one side and, and moved some FTEs into the building and planning side. So just wanted to highlight that, that the revenues for permits are, were expected to increase this, this year. I know there's a lot of development projects going on in the county. I know there's a lot of development projects going on in the county right now. Additionally, the positions that were added were one planner and a half, half of a Staff Services Specialist. The other half of that Staff Services Specialist is in the Administration Department. They're going to serve a dual function to help RMA out. Again, RMA being one, they kind of have a little bit of crossover in some of the functions that, that, that different folks in the department help, help out with. But we, I just wanted to, to make that highlight. Additionally, we have some reduced consultant services. One of the, I think, big highlights for last year was that the Chief Building Official Position was actually filled by an employee, which had, had previously been a consultant. So, we were able to actually reduce some of that consultant service cost because we're no longer paying out for that Chief Building Official. So, so that's under the salary. So, those are the, the major adjustments in Building and Planning. I know there were, again, a lot of, a lot of requests for some increases in, in this budget unit as well. But again, due to, due to, due to the times, we, we ask departments to, to reduce budget. I'll go on to the next item, which is one thirty-six, Buildings and Grounds Maintenance. No major changes here, just some small, minor changes to services and supplies. Mainly for a roof maintenance project. There's a couple more projects for roofs that have been recommended that we're not moving, we're not going to be able to move forward with this year. But I think one of the big projects that they want to, want to work on this year is for the Sheriff RMA Office. Being one of our more expensive county-owned assets, they want to protect that one. That one's also used in our COP bonding, was used in our COP bonding as collateral. So, we want to maintain, maintain that, that asset. So, that was, that was one of the changes in this budget. I think we're going to have a lot of deferred maintenance that is going to be brought up over these next few years. And we're working currently on the Capital Improvement Program to highlight that with the board. We're, we're hoping to do something similar to our budget book that we did this year and have an online Capital Improvement Program that will be updated annually and it'll be a five-year plan. And we're hoping to bring that back. I know it was, we've had one in the past, but there's been a few years since we've actually had one. And it's good timing right now. We're going to be finalizing the, the Maintenance Facilities Master Plan. And once that's finalized, it's going to give us a good picture to do that build out of the CIP and to include some of those projects. But we just wanted to, to kind of highlight that under the Building and, and Grounds Maintenance Budget Unit. The next budget unit is, is the twelve ninety-five Public Works and Administration. That's Agenda Item Number One Thirty-seven. Again, we had some reduction to staffing levels in this. There was a reduction to an engineer position and an engineering tech. We had four, I believe there were four vacancies before the budget was brought to the board on engineering-type positions. There's been, I think they've had difficulties actually hiring those positions and they've been using consultants to, to cover that. Those, we, we reduced those two positions to move those positions over to the planning side because there is that need, need under planning rather than those engineering positions at this time. And then there, also, we reduced, that's why it's coming out to a partial FTE count here at fourteen point two five. There was a reduction to, and two of the account, I think, one of the accounting clerks and one of the accounting tech, because their position is going to be paid out of, partially out of roads and partially out of the landfill because they, again, they do some of that wor- the work for all of the expenditures and the, and the receipts and administrative functions of some of these, these other funds. And we want to correctly start identifying that they need to be, we need to recover those costs. The general fund needs to be recovering those costs. So, just wanted to highlight that. And then consultant costs, again, were also increased. Again, we have some continued vacancies. Right now, I believe our Capital Program Manager Function is working out of a consultant and we did have some other administrative staff working out a consultant. If we do fill those positions, the consultant budgets will just be, it'll be requested that the consultant budget just be moved over to salaries and benefits. But just wanted to highlight tho- those items. The next two are kind of in conjunction. Last year, RMA had requested that we, we combine the Vets Memorial Park Budget Unit with the Historical Park and create one Parks and Rec Budget Unit. We've had the request to move that, again, to move that back out and we did bring a, an item before the end of the year to the board to recognize that. But I just wanted to highlight, that's why this, this budget unit shows a zero for last year's adopted. So, we reestablished it just so that the separate expenditures are realized between the two. And additionally, between our, in our Parks Program, we had the RMA Department just, the, the request of the board to move one of their, half of a Work Crew Supervisor's time from the Roads Department to Parks to have that, to have an additional staff member for Parks to, to provide the cleaning services and the, and the maintenance of the two, two parks, the Historical and Veterans Memorial Park. And, and that works, I think, really well for the RMA's disstructure just because our Roads Superintendent also manages the parks. So, it wo- it works well in conjunction with their, with their staffing and their structure. So, just wanted to highlight that. And then again, Historical Park, again, the, the, the real change here is that we moved the budget back to the other budget unit, so we split it. And then there's an increase of a point two five FTE under this park as well to show that, that split of the, the FT, the FTEs there. So, wanted to highlight that. Now for Parks, we have one point five FTEs up from previous year, which was one. So, just wanted to highlight that.
I had a question, Mr. Chair, Stuart? So, you're saying that we, we have one person for two parks, is, is that what I'm hearing?
One and a half.
One and a half. But one of them is our Roads Maintenance?
So, I think both of the positions are at the Work Crew Supervisor Classification Spec. We have one that was originally dedicated just for Parks, but in the Roads Department, there's another two. And it was determined by RMA staff that they could dedicate half of one of those positions over to Parks to help manage that and kind of be a backup to the other individual. So, you're going to have like a main individual and then kind of a backup for vacation, sick time, and also just to help, to help increase the service out there. But-
So, I asked that question because I'm curious, so, you know, this item, I think, should definitely be, or, or at least the, the structure would be good to mention to the Vets Commission since to them it'd be of interest to know how their parks are being taken care of and to a certain extent, that park has been, has basically, there's been, it's been second to priority, you know, to whatever else is going on with the county. And, and by default, that means we're having a lot of issues with now trying to get it up to speed as far as where that park should be. So, my bu- you know, whether you, we'd like it or not, we fix it now or wait and not fix it and wait for years and then deal with it later and then all of a sudden we're dealing with a whole lot more cost. So, I, I'd like to know how there's, basically what's the schedule and what is the priority? I know when I was playing ball, you know, before all this COVID stuff, I remember walking into a bathroom and it was like you could smell the ammonia from, from, it was just bad. So, I just, it makes me think that it's more like, you know, when we get to it kind of thing. And so, and I might be wrong, but there's, there's no understanding of what the planning is. On paper, it might sound good, you know, for RMA, but as far as the focus, the priority, I'd like to know a little bit better, what, how RMA's planning for that park to be cleaned and what exactly is being taken care of. Because I think that would be a good gauge for the Vets Commission to understand how they can, how can they make sure that that park's taken care of going forward, you know? And so, so anyways, just a better understanding of that budget item, what the structure is, how they plan that.
If you would like, we can either, we can bring something back, but I'll have to discuss with Harry to see, the RMA Director, to see what the, the schedule is. I don't, I don't have that information on hand, but we can bring some information back either to the Commission or to the Board.
I think the Commission would be really interested.
We, we have Harry on the line, Mr. Chair.
This is-
Is that Supervisor?
This is Harry Members.
Oh, oh, no, Harry, I'm sorry, yes, please chime in, Harry.
Yes, I mean, we, we tried to, Sheriff Members of Board, we tried to increase the services this year somewhat with this additional position. We can certainly continue to look at it. I am concerned about the park. We've, with many things being closed right now, we haven't had as much of an issue. But I think, looking forward, I'd like to maybe explore trying to provide a little more staffing to make sure that the maintenance is up to the level that it should be here and in Historic Park.
Yeah, yeah, you know, if I could chime in on this as well, this has been kind of a, a concern of mine, you know, my entire tenure here, and we've never been able to have a dedicated Parks Department with staff that would truly take care of our parks to the level that they need to be taken care of. We've always kind of, kind of fill in, you know, when we didn't have roadwork done. And, and it really shows with our parks and, you know, the, the Historical Park is a place where my family's been having their picnics every year up till this year for the last seventy years or, or so. And if we put some money into these parks, they're, they're really special. But you have to have a dedicated leader and I, I know you're working towards that, Harry. And the county's goal is ultimately that with dedicated staff, that that's all you do is maintain these parks, make sure the restrooms are, you know, taken care of. The grass is growing, the trees are growing and that's where we got to get to. And that's kind of what I was kind of talking about when we first opened these budget hearings is that we don't have quite enough resources to accomplish that and we've kind of Band-Aid this thing right along. And that's what we have in this budget this time too. But unless we, as a community, decide to, you know, commit that we have to have some reasonable economic development and growth, this is what you got. And it, it make, it's a big difference from other communities and areas that take advantage of these very important assets. And, you know, I, I think we have to develop that plan. We allocated additional hundred thousand on top of the, the budget earlier. It's important, it, it really is. So, that's my two cents.
Yeah, and I, I support that, Mr. Chair. I think when it comes down to what I iterated earlier was the, having a new perspective on Parks. Because I, I'm with you, as a business owner, you can't just spend money on something that's going to, ultimately, it's not going to return its investment. But that's assuming that you have that, that we as a board have that vision of what Parks can be potentially, so that even at best, they can self-maintain through revenue or a cost recovery, maybe coming up with a plan to support that. You know, any opportunity for revenue generation. And I know for a fact the community is ready to partner with the county to make sure that, that these parks are not only pristine, they are really, they're the gem of our region. Because I know both my boys playing baseball, it's, Samuel County was, was a place to go to play ball. But we didn't have all the other amenities other counties did. But, you know, we, we call those things that are not as though, as though they were. We believe in what we, we see first and then we basically plan for that. And I think that could create a huge opportunity for us.
Supervisor Medina, you have anything to add or?
No sir, nothing to add at this time.
Okay, with that, I'll open it up for public comment.
So, going back a couple of items where we're talking about not being able to fill a position and you have to get consultants, the money's still being spent. At what point does the board and does administrative, administration make a decision to go and to do a cost analysis, a comparison of the equal, the equal position of ABC to another county so that we can recruit people at a higher pay? Because that's why we lack what we have in this, in this county as employees. We, we're a stepping stone. They come in, they get the experience and they go off somewhere else and they get more money. This is not to say that who we have now are not doing a good job and they're not deserving of the position. They're probably deserving of more money, some of them. When is that decision going to be made? I mean, I, I hear it all the time, positions are open and we can't find people. We can't find people because we don't have the salaries for them. And thank you Supervisor Batello, because you're correct. We need economic development, we need money. I don't think people realize what a poor county we are and we keep shooting ourselves in the foot to allow new economic development to come here. I realize that there's only so much money, but at the same time, in order to recruit and close these openings up and stop paying money to consultants because they, eventually they cost us more money. So, instead of spending money on consultants, let's start filling the positions with full-time employees that are going to stay in our county, thank you.
Thank you.
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
Yeah, please.
Hello, Anita Kane with Reach San Benito Parks and also wearing my Historical Park, I'm President of the Historical Society. And I wanted to say thank you for the increase of a half of a position for the Parks Maintenance, which is so desperately needed. I know we have so many visitors coming out to the Historical Park in these COVID times to get away from sheltering in place and everyone is wondering how they can help. Whether it's looking where, where they can donate money, the, there's just so many opportunities to collect better fees for the Historical Park if we put our heads together and would be so willing to work with the county as, as far as the Historical Society work with the county on brainstorming how to increase fees out there. Because the nicer the place is and the less decline it's in, the better the visitor experience will be. And it's hard to improve and, and generate more income with the current skeleton crew that's out there. Lupe does his best and he needs help. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you can see, we're here for parks. I wanted to remind you that you have other parks besides the Vets Park and the Historical Park. You have the Deanza Trail, you have some parks in, off of Enterprise that are also county parks. And to have a supervisor that looked at all of your county parks would be a benefit. The revenue of parks is people. And it's important that we remember that our people have value, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, nobody online? Anyone else? Nobody online?
We came prepared.
Yes, you did.
Uh, I want to address, uh, the park staff, uh, that, uh. Harry Maverginis, uh, mentioned also, uh, how to dedicate, uh, people. And the problem that I see in having a single person or one and a half positions, uh. That, uh, referred to the maintenance of parks and taking care. Uh, is that there's no developed pride of place and pride of a job. So when you say, uh, as an employee, okay, today, uh, I've got eight hours to work on the Historic Park. I would say you get out there, you take a look, you really don't have time to make an assessment of what needs to be done. What are you supposed to bring? Next time I'll bring this next week when I've got my eight hours. So that's the problem in not having something dedicated, even if it's one full-time person that, that's all they do. Is work on the parks. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I don't see any, uh, further public comment and I'll bring it back to the board and I, I think that. That is something we need to look at is the fees too. I, I always thought that renting a little barbecue pit. Out there at the Historical Park was pretty reasonable. Uh, C- CAO Espinoza, I, I'm sure you have a.
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to, to chime in a little bit there. Yes, we definitely, um, I think have understood the importance of addressing. These park issues. Um, one of the reasons why, um, we're requesting to move forward with a little bit more additional funding to actually. Kinda get us, so, get us through this, this hump with the, the actual master plan, the River Park Master Plan, but also to address all of our parks. And to put a plan together on how we actually can be fiscally neutral if possible. On operations and making sure that we can, um, you know, keep those parks up to par when it comes to maintenance and it comes to operations. So I think those are really important things. Um, hopefully, uh, we can get that going as soon as, um, soon. The other thing I, I wanted to comment on, um, is regard to recruitment and, you know, this is, the recruitment, um. Issues are not just with our county. Um, this, the recruitment has been a real big problem for, um. A lot of counties statewide and nationwide, to be quite honest, um, with the baby boomers leaving. And a lot of, uh, employees at those times retiring in, in government service. Um, there really hasn't been a, a thought process or, or a, a mechanism to train people and. And with, um, the technology sectors and, and the price and the cost or, or the, the pay scales. That, um, that are received are just far outweigh government. And so there's been a huge discrepancy and a lot of people going into those sectors. Instead of the public sector. So it's just been a lack of resources, lack of interest, lack of people moving in. So we've obviously are doing everything we can. We have done a comp and salary study, um, which we've surprisingly. Are not that far off the market, other than, uh, a small, some small things that we need to work on. But I think the key is, is, is to really train from within and, and kind of, uh, take hold of, of that. So I just wanted to, to highlight that. I think it was important. And one last thing was with regards to item one thirty-six with regards to the master plan. Um, there's definitely a lot of work, um, that we have to address. Your board did pass, uh, moving forward with a study on that. Which we've been working, um, through, obviously through COVID, through, there's a lot of things that have come up, um, that have kind of delayed, delayed the master plan. But we hope to bring that to you soon, uh, to review and to, um, look at what the needs are, the facilities here, um. Within the county to move forward with addressing that. So a lot of work that's still been going on besides COVID, um, behind the scenes and. And hopefully we'll get that to you soon. So I just wanna make sure that your board knew that.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Any other comments from the, my board members? If not, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, temporary due pass for one thirty-five to one thirty-nine.
I make a motion to support, uh, to move forward one thirty-six through one thirty-nine. Do pass.
Have a motion.
Medina second, Medina second.
Perfect. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, hearing none. The ayes have it. We'll, we'll group the, uh, roads, uh, together one forty to one forty-four as well.
Actually, one forty-one through one forty-four.
We did one forty. Uh, that's correct. I, my mistake.
Okay, so, uh, item one forty-one is the budget unit that holds the, uh, more of the, the federal. Uh, road, highway, bridge projects. Um, the, again, I think I mentioned it at the beginning, um, but there are multiple federal bridge projects. And, um, actually, before I go any further, I just wanted to highlight that, um. The roads, uh, schedule, um, is attached to the budget document. Um, you can find it on the main page towards the right, um, if you wanna see all of the projects, but. This year, we actually made sure to highlight all the projects, uh, by the engineers' numbers and to include. All of the roads and bridges that are gonna be worked on and their dedicated funding sources. Um, so just wanted to highlight that for the board. So, um, I'm not gonna go into the detail of each, uh, road and bridge in my presentation. But it's, it's available and we can bring it up to discuss if needed, but, so for item, uh. Again, for the budget unit twenty twenty. Um, uh, federal bridge projects are gonna be moving forward this year. That's why you see the huge, um, increase. To sixteen point four million dollars, um, from the previous fiscal year's adopted budget of four and a half. Um, some of the bigger projects are the Hospital Road and Union Road Bridges. Um, you'll see the most expenditures under those. Those two items, uh, uh, for this fiscal year. Some of the other bridges you'll see in future years. I think the program's about. Three years, um, and they're all, um, beginning to move forward, um, this year. The, uh, the next item is item one forty-two, um, which is the SB one. Road Maintenance and Reconstruction Budget Unit, which is twenty twenty-five. Um, there are, uh, many new projects, uh, this year. Um, there's a lot more projects that are moving forward. Um, the, uh, largest expenditures are coming from Fairview, Union and Sienna Go Road. Um, there has been a slower ramp up of these projects. Um, it's been like one year in arrears as we finally get to. Um, uh, the projects that the board has approved. Um, so these are, uh, previous years, uh, approved list, um, projects. Uh, the board did approve the twenty twenty-one list, but the engineers will be working on, um, all of the design and spec on those. And those will most likely, we'll see the expenditures in the following year. So just kinda wanted to highlight how that, how that kind of flows. Um, but there will be approximately three point four million. Um, the, uh, the bids did come in a little bit lower. We have already seen the bids. Um, so there will be a savings here and actually, um, we've had a lot of, uh, savings. Uh, compared to the engineer's estimate, um, and we're getting good, really good bids right now. Um, which is perfect, cause we have a lot of money to spend on these, these roads projects at this time. Um, but we will probably be bringing back, um, additional projects to the board later on. I know. The Sienna Go Road had to be, uh, increased because of a mapping issue, but, uh, but we have that covered in the cost. Because we did have a savings there, um, in the original bid. So, uh, just wanted to highlight that. The, uh, next item is one forty, uh, three, Budget Unit twenty thirty. Which is the John Smith Landfill Road Improvement. Um, this is a new budget unit to fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, there was, uh, an administrative need to kind of highlight this funding separately. Uh, because there will be ongoing funding with the new, um, agreement. Um, terms with John Smith Landfill of a certain percentage coming back for roads. Um, so this is where, uh, these fundings are gonna go. Additionally. This year, uh, the board had approved transfers in of approximately four point two million to work on. Um, Best and Fairview Road Projects, and those have also been included in the roads, uh, project list, uh, for everyone's, um, viewing. Um, but this budget unit is specifically related to John Smith Landfill. Um, related funding and projects. Um, these, these funds are supposed to go towards that impact. Of the John Smith, uh, landfill area. So the roads that, that see those impacts, so. Um, and the, uh, the last budget unit under roads on regular agenda. It's item one forty-four, which is Budget Unit twenty-two seventy. This is the Measure G projects. Again, this is another new budget unit. Um, we will be seeing, um, funding coming in. From Measure G from COG this year. Um, I believe the agreements are gonna be signed this year as well. Um, but we're gonna be seeing about, uh, four point, uh, we have about four point six million in projects. Um, and we believe we will have enough funding by the end of the year to cover these. Um, and, uh, if needed, we will bring, um, items to the, item to the board to. To either borrow against the road impact, be fund or another source. Um, but at this time, we don't think it's prudent to, or, or there's not really a need to move forward on any loan or financing. At this time for, for these projects, um, because the money, um, is, is coming in and we already have some, some dedicated funds, at least. Funds at least to get to this year. Um, we may look at additional financing for future projects dependent upon. Um, how quickly the board wants to move forward these projects and how, you know, staffing levels and, and, and that, 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 those things. Um, but again, this, uh, this budget unit is dedicated to that Measure G sales tax. Uh, and the local agencies apportionment. Um, again, this is nothing to do with Highway twenty-five. Um, that's managed by COG, that's COG's, uh, portion of management. These are the local, the local road projects. Um, and then some of the major projects, uh, again, they're on the list as well for anyone to view, but there's gonna be projects on South Side. Union and Buena Vista Roads, um, coming from, uh, from the Measure G, uh, funding sources. So I think, uh, that's all that I wanted to highlight, um, but I can again, take any questions on, on.
Okay, any questions from, um, the board?
I, I have a question. Um, on the Measure G, one of the things I was somewhat concerned about still. Um, it, it's great to see all these projects moving forward. We're using it, uh, we're collecting, uh, tax revenue. And we're putting it onto pavement. We're getting some real good projects going right now. We're u- utilizing other funding sources and getting a real large bang for our buck on. Much-needed road maintenance, that's been deferred too long. What I am still nervous about is the programming, uh, in a, uh, in a few years. Um, there's a, be a gap about seven years that the county won't, and the cities won't get any Measure G. Funding. Um, and I, I think we need to start planning on, on that or adjusting, uh, the program. That there, there needs to be a balance. Um, yes, Highway twenty-five absolutely needs to be widened and needs to be widened. Uh, at a, uh, at a faster pace than what we're doing right now. But, um, we still need to set ourselves up with some, I guess, a, a bonding mechanism. To maintain either the county roads or, or the twenty-five project. And, uh, there has to be some real forward thinking on that. You go, you ready?
Yeah, so, um, I think that's something that we have discussed. I think we need, do need to work, um, closely with COG on it. I think, uh, some of this is all, all, obviously directed at a COG, I think, cause that's the primary with the Measure G was to get Highway twenty-five addressed. There's obviously nuances and complexities with it. Harry probably can chime in a little bit. You know, we, we're addressing. Um, you know, the, an expressway. And that being the frontage road versus the, just the widening of it and, and getting that accomplished. But again, the, the difficult part is Caltrans and, and a lot of those things that you, you're well aware, but for the public's sake. There's a lot of complexities where they wanna move it up to a higher standard or a higher level of, of thorough way compared to. What it is now and expand, just, you know, expanding it to, um, two lanes, only side four lanes total. So. So obviously, there's a lot of, a lot of work that needs to be addressed with that. And I think, you know, I think the pride, the prudent way is probably to go that route. From a cost savings perspective, because the costs are gonna be a lot and it's gonna, you know, really, um. Hold up the local road projects, um, unless we do what, what Stuart was talking about, which we have looked into. Is actually moving forward with some sort of bonding or doing something, um, with that. Um, some sort of COP or some sort of loan that we can move forward with and front-load that. But then there's gonna have to be a servicing of that and how are we gonna service that through that gap in time, which I think we still, we need to look at. And how long is that time gonna be, um, based on what type of project is gonna go out to twenty-five? So those are the, those are the complexities of, of timing and other things, which, um, obviously we're still working through. Uh, we know that there's gonna be a phase two to this. That's one thing that we do wanna move forward with, but I think what you're saying is absolutely correct. It's, it's more the phase three, phase four and phase.
Right.
Five. How are we gonna continue this momentum? And I think those are really valid points which we have to work on and it takes time, it takes effort, but that's something we do need to put, um, some priority to and we will.
Yeah, and I, I, I mentioned it just to plant the seed in, in your mind, uh, Supervisor Hernandez and, and Medina. That you're be here for, for a while, I'm gonna be gone, but, uh, that's what I would be thinking if I was, uh, stay here. And, uh, I don't know, uh, Harry, you have anything to add or?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do. Uh, we have had discussions with. Uh, Mary Gilbert, the Executive Director, uh, Stuart Knight met with her last week. Uh, the COG Board at their last meeting approved, uh, a, uh, a program that would. Um, actually give the local agencies additional money upfront in the first five years. So the good news is we will have more money than we had thought we would have initially, uh, approximately about a million dollars a year or more. Uh, but at the fifth year, uh, there would be a, uh, probably a seven-year period, as was mentioned earlier. Where we possibly would not get funds. Uh, I'm still working on the concept that we may be able to get something. In those coming years, it may not be as much, but, uh, obviously Highway twenty-five is a high priority and we wanna get that done. But, uh, I'm hoping that there'll be some way, that some amount of funding will be still available, uh, to the city and the county. Uh, in order to finish our road projects. So, uh, you will have something coming back to your board. Uh, in the next month or so, uh, to put together some agreement with COG. So we'll have another bite of the apple on this as well.
Mr. Chairman, as may as well, uh, some of these projects, it's been, it's been great to, to see the collaboration with the cities is to cut our cost as well. So on the actual staging of large equipment, there's a huge cost to that. So we're looking at, uh, joint efforts between the city of Hollister and our county on some of these internal projects to make our dollar or make. Public's dollar really, last a little longer and get more roads done, more, um, thorough way done. So I know that, that we're working on that. Um, right here on, uh, Nash Road, River, River Parkway area. I know Buena Vista, there's some other, I think even, um. Uh, some other, other areas. Valley View, that's right, Valley View as well. So those are, those are some of the, um, roads that we're working on and we're collaborating with the city to try to. Kinda cut our costs down a little bit and make the dollar last a little longer, yeah.
And, you know, again, we keep, you know, emphasizing this is the, uh, the role of having businesses. Operate here, local jobs and businesses, creating tax revenue, uh, above and beyond some of our projections. Will make, make things a whole lot easier to, to do some of these projects as well. Uh, any other comments from the board? If not, I'll open it up for public comment.
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
Go ahead, Valerie.
Um, about the Measure G, uh, I had an incident come up, uh, in the last few days over the weekend. Uh, that a gentleman from Aromas, Irish Muzel, uh, he. uh, that a gentleman from Aromas, Irish Muzel, uh, he, uh, wrote, "Today I put a ghost bike which acts as a memorial and a warning to fellow cyclists and drivers about the dangers of the descent down Anzar Road at the old Williams Quarry uh, to honor Lynn Cap who had a bike accident on Anzar caused by the deep fissures in the road. Sadly, Lynn passed away with his injuries on New Year's Day nineteen, I mean, twenty nineteen. Uh, the Aromas community and local cyclists have Lynn and his families in their hearts and thoughts and hope for the ghost ride reminds cars, trucks and cyclists to pay close attention on conditions on Anzar Road." Uh, I commented back that, uh, about the, someone else added another comment about, "Well, that's what our Measure G funds are for, right? Why aren't our county roads being seen to?" And I commented back that, uh, with four hundred miles of county road and how much taxes we get in from businesses in order to put, uh, tax dollars toward roads, it's going to be a long time coming that, that we have, uh, good maintenance. Uh, but the endeavor is there and they're moving forward and twenty-five will, uh, get widened out. It's also a necessity. Um, I didn't hear back from them. However, Mr. Muzel, uh, commented that I would be, uh, uh, privileged to have, uh, his photographs and comments, uh, on the Reach Facebook page, uh, to also warn bicyclists and bring mindfulness to the fact that we need, uh, road accommodations for bicycles. And so when, when the roads continue to be improved in the county, we need to have that side accommodation, three foot of shoulder on the road where a bicyclist can move. And I know that, uh, Harry Maveriginis is a very forward-thinking planner. He understands and he's very much for parks and bike safety. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for, uh, approval of, uh, one forty-one to one forty-four. All together.
Aye.
I make a motion, we approve one forty-one to one forty-four.
I have a motion.
Second, Medina.
And a second from Medina, Supervisor Medina. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? No oppose, we'll move on to capital, uh, projects.
Uh, so capital projects, uh, item one forty-five, this is budget unit thirty-five hundred. Uh, the major changes this year again are related to social services. Um, uh, capital projects that are going to be, um, moving forward this year. Um, we have a transitional housing project, homeless shelter phase three, um, and the behavioral health building. Um, this represents approximately a nine million dollar, um, in, increase. Um, just wanted to highlight to the board that that use of fund balance at eight point five, that's related to the COP that we've already received. So we have money in the bank right now, um, to cover the co, to cover most of the costs of behavioral health, uh, building. Um, but that's why you don't see a, uh, revenues matching, um, the expenditures because we have, uh, fund balance under, under the capital project fund to cover, to cover those costs from the financing that we already did. Um, but those are the big things. Again, uh, the capital projects list is on, um, on the, uh, on the budget, uh, on the budget book. Um, if anyone cares to, to look into, to those items that are, um, hopefully moving forward this year. There are some items, um, just some general items, um, for the jail, um, uh, some maintenance, uh, maintenance-type capital projects. Um, and then we have the, uh, we still have, um, some finalization needed, uh, for occupancy on the, uh, the new jail. Um, unfortunately COVID, uh, there was a part that was purchased in November for a radio system and it got stuck in another country, I believe, um, uh, due to, to, to COVID. And, um, unfortunately, we still, we still don't have that in place and installed. So, um, I think the sheriff's office is hoping that by the end of the year, they're going to have that, um, that wrapped up and, and can move forward with all of their requirements from the state fire marshal, the BSCC and the, in the city, um, on the occupancy for that. So, uh, I just wanted to, uh, highlight those major, uh, changes or, uh, major projects that are still ongoing, uh, for this year. So, I'll, I'll leave it back to you Supervisor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions from the board? Seeing none, any public comment?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
Okay, um, I'll bring it back to the board, close public comment. And, um, for, uh, budget unit, uh, seventy, thirty-five hundred, uh, can I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve item number one forty-five, do pass.
Medina, second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, hearing none, uh, temporary due pass is granted. Uh, we'll move on to child support services.
Um, so, so this is a, uh, one that we wanted to highlight to the board. Um, I think we brought this up as a concern, uh, during the recommended budget and notified the board that we were going to have to make changes to the child support services budget. Child support services gets, uh, federal and state aid through, uh, the State Department of Child Support Services. The State Department determines the allocation, uh, to the different agencies. Um, just so everybody, uh, uh, understands, child support services for San Benito County is a regional child support with Santa Cruz County. Um, the director for San Benito County is the director for, uh, Santa Cruz County. Um, we were notified by the director that, uh, and we've had discussions in previous years that this might be the way that the state is going, um, because there has been stagnant revenues between the, uh, for the regional agency. You'll see fluctuations because there's been changes between the two budgets, um, as the years have gone. Um, but really the revenue to the agent, the regional agency as a whole has stayed stagnant over the last few years. Um, and the state, uh, moved forward with, um, making some adjustments to our allocation. Um, they've increased allocations in other areas, um, but they have decreased allocations in a few different county, um, agencies. Um, they have determined that, uh, there is a certain FTE count or employee count to a case ratio, um, that all of the agencies need to fall under, um, which has, uh, required this regional agency to make some difficult decisions, um, in making some cuts. The, uh, total, uh, funding reduction, um, for this year for San Benito and Santa Cruz, uh, regional agency is thirteen point seven percent. Um, on the recommended budget, we had already unfunded and reduced a few positions, um, in the previous year. And what we had, what we did originally on the recommended budget was reduce the positions from eighteen to fifteen, um, to recognize that these were vacant positions, um, that had no effect on our, our employees. Um, but due to the additional revision from the state at this point, um, we are recommending an additional reduction of two FTEs. Again, um, these are also positions that are vacant. They are recently vacant. I believe one was a retirement and one was a, uh, uh, the employee ju- just, uh, left the position. Um, this, uh, so this reduction actually has, has no, um, uh, impact on our employees at this time. Um, but again, we are still looking at this, um, and seeing if we do need to bring in additional changes. Um, this is obviously new, the reduction was very, uh, quick and, um, it was, I think, more than we were expecting. I think it was supposed to be more of a, uh, slower reduction, but, um, obviously thirteen point seven percent was, uh, uh, quite a, quite a bit immediately. Um, there was a lot more, uh, positions that were reduced at Santa Cruz County and unfortunately it sounds like they are having to go through a layoff process. Um, but I just wanted to highlight that fortunately San Benito, um, was in a bit of a better position with their position levels and having those vacancies that, um, you know, unfortunate, it's unfortunate, but it was a good timing, um, I guess for the county on, on, on this, that not having those positions filled. That being said, there is a, uh, additional supplemental budget amendment, um, that is recommended. Um, this, uh, again, was in, is included, um, here, um, and made available. And we're going to, we're going to put the supplemental budgets, um, as an attachment to this budget document on the website so that anyone can see after this meeting. Um, but the, the items are to reduce the revenues and expenditures by a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty to match those revenue estimates. And then we do need to make that reduction of two FTEs to cover those, those reductions on the county's authorized position list. Um, so those are staff's recommendations on, on, on this item. And I'll, I'll, uh, send it back to you Supervisor.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from the board? Seeing none, any comments from the public?
If you wish to make a comment, press star nine or raise your hand.
No, no comments from the public, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I make a motion to approve temporary due pass.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And any oppose? No oppose, um, temporary due pass is yes. Move on to administrative corrections.
Okay, so, um, on this item, um, I have four slides total, um, three of, uh, we have three, uh, corrections and then, um, the fourth slide outlines the staff recommendation and there is an, a supplemental budget adjustment that is required for one of the administrative corrections. Um, and I will highlight that for the board. Again, it was included in the, uh, in the items. So, last year, uh, the Agricultural Commissioners Budget Unit, which is twelve fifty, um, had a four-by-four truck on their fixed asset list. Um, they actually also had the weights and measures truck, um, and both of these have already been brought to the board. Um, we, we knew that we weren't going to get the weights and measure truck because of COVID and everything that happened. So we had already included it in the recommended budget. But we have the same issue with the four-by-four truck, uh, with, due to COVID. Uh, it, it changed the period of when we were going to receive it. So we're actually going to receive it after the fiscal year ended, meaning the expenditures have to go into the next year. Um, again, these item, this, this item was actually already approved, um, by the board, but it would require an increase of thirty-two thousand dollars to the budget unit of, uh, twelve fifty. Um, so we do have a supplemental, uh, budget amendment. Um, so that's one of the corrections. Also, we would need to, uh, have the board approved adding that four-by-four truck to fixed asset list as well. The, uh, the second administrative correction, um, is on the personnel schedule. Again, I, I provided the board with a revised schedule and I will include that revised schedule, the supplemental package that we put on the, um, uh, on the actual website after this is done. Um, so that everyone, the, the board and the public knows that those were the changes made at the public, at the, at the budget hearing. Um, but these are, there are no net changes to the actual FTEs. It's merely a change in the staffing between divisions. So for the clerk recorder elections, um, they've had to make some adjustment based on the election year. Um, and, uh, going with temp positions rather than, um, hiring full-time employees through the election. So they needed to, we needed to make a, a minor adjustment between them. Um, it's, it's a change of point five here and point two here, but, um, no net position change, no actual FTE change. And then, um, on the mental health substance abuse side, I mistakenly, uh, uh, put the request of their FTEs in the wrong, uh, the wrong position. Um, the positions, this is very similar named, um, but that's, uh, it's like mental health case manager versus case manager. So, um, just, uh, just some minor, uh, minor corrections there, um, that we have. And again, I have the revised schedule and those are the budget units on the schedule that are directly, uh, reflected, uh, that you can, uh, view. Um, the, the last administrative correction, um, again, this was, uh, my, my mistake.
Hate it when you make so many mistakes.
Um, on the debt service, uh, fund, uh, page on the budget unit, I was supposed to have two tables, it only had one. Um, the second table was supposed to identify our behavioral health COP. Again, the roll-up on all the other pages and all the other schedules show the total budget and it's included in this, but unfortunately I didn't have that section on that page. So, um, I want to correct that. Um, it's the budget unit thirteen thirty, which is actually a brand-new budget unit for the behavioral health COP. Um, we will begin payments on, um, on that COP this year, um, the direct cost of which is five hundred and seven thousand. Um, and we do have, uh, budgeted twenty-five hundred, uh, for the maintenance of the, um, account. Um, and so I just wanted to, uh, make sure that we got that into the record, that that needed to be, uh, needed to be, uh, changed. And, um, the last, uh, the last item here is our staff recommendation, which is to approve the supplemental budget amendment, um, to increase that, uh, that fixed asset cost um, for the four-by-four truck, um, which I think we actually already have on hand right now. Um, and then the, uh, approve the administrative corrections to the, uh, the, uh, recommended budget document that were outlined, um, the, the three other, the three other corrections.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board? Supervisor, uh, any comments or questions from the public?
This is a little bit awkward. I do want to comment that a four-by-four is totally appropriate for, uh, Miss Overstreet. Um, however, I didn't know where else to add this comment, uh, as we went along. Uh, and I, and I feel that it's really important, uh, for the supervisors, especially since we're coming up with a new election and we're going to have new people coming in and new appointments. Uh, when the supervisors are elected to the board, the appointing, appointments they make are seriously important. The persons appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission and the Planning Commission are not appointed as placeholders. The county needs to provide for the related training that is available through the state and different associations to assist supporting vital training of these mostly volunteer positions. The county is losing out on the real assets these appointees have to offer. Having said that, I would like to encourage the board of supervisors to budget and provide for training appropriate to the needs of their various appointed commissioners whenever possible and available. Our RMA director has been extremely, uh, forthcoming in providing, uh, good opportunities for the planning commissioners to, uh, get training through the American Planning Association. And it has been unbelievably, uh, enlightening, uh, and I recommend it, uh, to all our, uh, all of our planning commissioners have, have taken such and, uh, gotten a lot out of it. Until you understand the basics of planning, you're really not making good decisions there on the planning commission. And that's the same with the Parks and Rec Commission. If we do not have people that are dedicated to sports, to recreation, and that are just coming in to pastime to have an entry level into some kind of involvement, it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No other public comment. I'll close public comment period and bring it back to the board. I think that is a good point, too, is that our... There should be some, you know, training opportunities if we can for commissioners and new, you know... I know the training that supervisors, that was very valuable to me when I came on board. And I know finding commissioners, it's a big, big, very complex job. People don't understand it. And it takes a lot to... Of experience and it'd be helpful if there was training opportunities for the folks stepping in. Any other comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the recommended budget administrative corrections.
Second, Mr. Chair.
I made the motion and I got a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Got it. Any oppose? No oppose? That passes. I'll bring it back to the board for any other final thoughts before we go to the recommendations.
I had some... Yeah, so I had some final thoughts about the... One of the items that we put on consent, I didn't... You know, I don't know why I thought it was on the regular agenda, but either way, it had to do with EDC, economic development. I know, you know, all things considered within the context of the conversation we've been having, EDC is a very important role. I'd like to get a little bit of better understanding how they work with planning with the RMA department. And then also, if, you know, I know I've asked for it before, for us to get reporting on what they've been doing. You know, we committed $100,000, but I know at the budget, we have a chance to, to a certain extent, to address and change that if things aren't panning out. On planning, when it comes to commercial development, I think it makes sense, but all things considered, I'd like to see some fruits of their labor right now and I don't know what's going on. So, I personally would like to get an update about it and maybe even talk about how we can have EDC have a stronger focus on tourism, maybe working with the chamber within the context of what we've been talking about. I mean, there's got to be a diversified interest for revenue generation in San Manito County. And I know we beat the drum a lot with parks. We need EDC to help. And if they're not willing to, maybe we can talk about using their budget for someone who's more boots on the grounds like the chamber. And I'm not... At the end of the day, I don't... I just want it... I'd like to see that focus. And I haven't heard anything from EDC, so I'm just a little concerned. And I like, you know... So, two things. The request is understanding what they're doing, what the current update is. And the second thing is, what are we going to do to use them to better push the opportunity of parks and tourism in our community?
I think that's a good point. And perhaps in the next month or so, we get EDC make a report. It is time. I agree. Supervisor Medina, you have anything?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to close by... I want to thank Stuart for an excellent job in presenting this budget. The work has been really outstanding. You coordinated the whole thing. What is this, your second budget year? Quite a bit better than even the first and you did a great job last year, too. I highly recommend golf instead of bike riding. Well, Stuart has a little sore foot, but you did a great job. I also want to thank the department heads for putting this budget together. It's a team effort and I really appreciate all the work that goes into it. And during these very trying times, you know, we're all learning to rework remotely. Half of our staff is working from home, it seems. And it's just a little... It's quite a bit different. And this is a budget I think the county should be very proud of. I think we're positioned very well, relatively speaking, with other counties. And we're moving forward. And it really makes me feel good to be a part of this board and the county. A very good job, Ray, for getting this all put together. So, with that, before the board, we have a staff recommendation. And I'm going to read it.
Anthony? Hey, Anthony?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Supervisor Bertello?
Yes.
I'd like to just say one thing I had forgot to mention. I do want to thank you personally, Anthony. 16 years of doing the budget process. There were some good times, some bad times throughout the years. 16 years is a lot. And I just appreciate you participating in the budget process and moving us from where we were 16 years ago to where we are now. Just wanted to say thank you.
I appreciate that. Yeah, it's been quite an evolution. And I appreciate that. Thank you very much. County Council, Thompson?
Yes, I just noticed on number five, if I could just add a word at the end of staff recommendations for number five. So, the words that I would like to add or other staff... Or other... Or staffing changes or other staffing changes. So, the sentence would read, "Direct staff to satisfy, meet, and confer obligations, if any, regarding reduced position allocations or staffing changes."
Okay. And with that, this is pretty important. So, I'm going to read the staff recommendations and then we could take an action on it. Number... There are six bullet points. I'm going to read number one right now. "authorize and direct the county administration officer to prepare the 2020-21 adopted budget resolution reflecting the changes made by the board during the budget hearings, including supplemental budget amendments proposed by the staff, the administration corrections above, and the fixed assets and position schedule adjustments." Number two is authorize and direct the county administration officer in conjunction with the county auditor and controller to develop the adopted budget document in accordance with the County Budget Act. Number three, authorize and direct the county administrative officer to make adjustments to position counts, appropriations, revenues, fund balances, et cetera, to correct clerical errors as needed. Number four, authorize the county administration officer, if any unbudgeted, unassigned fund balance is available at the end of the year 1920, to allocate the funds in the following order: Reestablish the disaster recovery reserve in the amount not to exceed 1 million and available general fund reserves. Number five, direct staff to satisfy and meet and confer obligations, if any, regarding reduced position allocations or other staffing. And number six is conclude the fiscal year 2021 budget hearings. That's what the staff recommendations are. And if there's no further...
I'd like to make...
Go ahead, Supervisor Medina.
I would just like to make a motion for staff recommendation.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion from Supervisor Medina, first from Supervisor Medina and a second from Supervisor Hernandez. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Hearing none. Congratulations. We think we have a budget. Thank you. I think that concludes our meeting for today. Fantastic. Motion to adjourn?
One last comment. Thank you for the new website. It looks really cool. I know you guys are still working on it with what Supervisor Bertello mentioned, the fact that it's so accessible, it's easy to navigate, or it's easier than the previous. It's got so much reference points. It's really intuitive. You guys did an awesome job. Thank you, staff. Thank you, our CAO. Thank you, Stuart. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's huge accomplishment and I just wanted to recognize that. And yeah, this is your final budget hearing, Supervisor Bertello. So, man, thank you for the heavy lift. We got something to follow for sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.